Gentlemen, if you want.
David, go ahead.
If you'd like, upon receipt of the storm water plan, if the board's comfortable, it could be referred to the town board for re-referral to the county without him having to be placed on the agenda again.
What's the board's feeling on that?
I like that. That's a good idea.
I think that would move it along nicely.
Yeah, I too am okay with that.
The concern I have is if SWIP needs to be modified according to the town engineer. So we're sending a SWIP to county that's not the final SWIP. So that's not just putting that out there.
A SWIP to be reviewed by the town engineer prior to referral to the county.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
But in the end, but in the end, we are the ones that will approve the initial, the end SWIP, right? Or SWIP, yeah, sorry, I'm babbling my words.
Well, you, Anna, you, if we did it tonight, you'd be approving to move it to the town board to move to the county without reviewing the SWIP.
Yeah, okay. All right. I want to make sure I understood what everyone was saying.
Well, I think what Warren is proposing is that it wouldn't go to the county till the county engineer reviewed it.
Yeah.
That's my, that's my recommendation.
Yeah, that's fine with me, too. I don't, I'm comfortable with either. It's really what you guys are comfortable with. You know, it doesn't, I don't have a preference per se.
I see Warren's point.
Considering the location, do you see any possible problems with the stormwater?
I don't, as of now, we, from the, what I understand, there's two drainage channels along 209 and then along Salt Hill that naturally run. So they would just be already channeled into those waterways and, you know, they've run the hydro cat and everything. I mean, the, the, when they do these, they want to make sure that they're not adding, you know, any increased stormwater. So any, if there's any, any of the models or studies show that there's an increased stormwater, then they put in measures to make sure that we reduce it.
Considering from the location, a lot of that is rock up that way. Is there a space for a good retention?
Yeah, they, they are exploring that option if, if it's needed.
Okay.
So what, what would the board like to do with this one? Do you want to pre-approve it, subject to the town engineer reviewing it, reviewing and approving it? Or do you want to hold it till the next month? I'm okay either way.
I'd rather pre-approve it, to be honest, with, with the town engineers' review. So, so we can move this along for the applicant. I mean, that, that would be my recommendation.
Anybody have any issue with that recommendation?
No.
I just want it to be subject to the review of the decommissioning statement, the decommissioning plan.
Sure, that's a good idea, too. Definitely.
Andrew, do you want to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion based on the review of the decommissioning plan and the review of the, the town engineer consultant to review the stormwater plan. I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second that.
Go ahead.
Gabby, can you call the roll?
Ms. Hainer?
Yes.
Mr. Homquist?
Yes.
Mr. Decker?
Yes.
Mrs. Tavopoulos?
Yes.
Chairman Ring?
Yes. Okay.
So for clarity, it'll, once we get the stormwater plan reviewed and reviewed by the town engineer and town attorney's comfortable with the decommissioning plan, well, it'll get re-refered to the county.
Yes.
And then we'll wait and, we'll wait a month and Zach, that's looking like the August meeting now, maybe.
Yeah, that's, that's fine with us. And, you know, I mean, we definitely want to get this done, but we can, we can't even per se break ground or clear until November 1st anyway. So that works well within our timeline. That's okay with us.
Perfect.
Okay, good luck.
Great. Thanks, everyone.
Sorry, I'm late. I had a transformer fire at Marshall's.
Jeez.
Yeah. You can't go shopping at Marshall's right now.
We have.
Okay, the next piece of business is the Uncle B's, the, the Crossing Apartments. These are, I don't know, a dozen or so, single bedroom with an office apartments behind the laundromat where Uncle B's Car Wash is. And I believe that we received all the comments from the town departments on the services and we're all good. We do have a draft resolution ready. Is there, are there any discussion or further comments from the board to the applicant? Is the applicant, I'm looking for the applicant. Yep, Bart, thank you. Any, any comments from the board for, for Bart?
I don't have anything.
None here.
I'm good. I'm good. All right.
All right, David, can you read the draft resolution that we have been, please?
Sure. Also, this is, in summary, a motion to recommend the town board initiate SEAKER and refer this set of application to the county planning board. Whereas the applicant, Uncle B's Holdings LLC, seeks site plan amendment approval for construction of a pair of one-bedroom apartment buildings on existing, existing mixed-use property. And whereas the applicant has submitted a complete site plan amendment application to the town Ulster Planning Board in coordination with the Ulster Town Board, including a submitted State Environmental Review Act short assessment form. And whereas the town board has final site plan review and approval authority for this application, now therefore being resolved. Based on review of the application, Town of Ulster Planning Board recommends to the town board the following. Be it further resolved, the town board, Town of Ulster should determine that the site plan application is an unlisted action under SEAKER and that the town board of the Town Ulster should declare it to be lead agency for coordinated review with the Town of Ulster Planning Board. And now be it further resolved, the planning board recommends that the town board formally refer the application to the Ulster County Planning Board as per County Planning Board Land Use Referral Guide in New York, New York State General Municipal Law.
Right. Do it, do we have a motion on the table?
I'm sure I'll make that motion for the resolution.
I'll second that. Sandra?
Gabby, can you call the roll?
Yes.
Mr. Homquist?
Yes.
Mr. Decker?
Yes.
Mrs. Tavopoulos?
Yes.
Chairman Ring?
Yes. All right, good luck, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good evening.
You, too. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You, too.
Good night.
Okay, we have three pieces of new business, which two of them are actually old business. But Albany Seven LLC is, we just need to recommend a 62-day extension for approval. They missed the filing dates for a variety of reasons. Any discussion on this one?
Is the applicant in the, in the meeting?
No, they weren't. I told them it, it was just formality, so it wasn't necessary for them to come because nothing's changed. They just need the extension.
Okay. No, I didn't have anything.
I'm good.
All right, yeah, I'm good.
Okay, then I'll make the motion that we recommend approval of the extension by a simple resolution.
I'll second that.
Gabby?
Ms. Hainer?
Yes.
Mr. Homquist?
Yes.
Mr. Decker?
Yes.
Mrs. Tavopoulos?
Yes.
Chairman Ring?
Yes. Okay, the next piece of new business is the Romeo Site Plan Amendment for Stormwater Mitigation. So this predates me, but I'm aware of, of this. This is the plot of land located in Lake Katrine, I believe, on 9W, where the Kia dealership was going to be located. It's north of the Holiday Inn Express. I believe it's the next lot. Across from Stewart's.
Yes, and south of Angeles Pizza.
Yep, so they ended up clear-cutting the property, which created some issues for the neighboring property, including some flooding issues and site issues. And I'm sure Warren could, you know, cover all the, all the details. I believe we have a resolution, David, that you've prepared on what we need to do with this to remedy those issues.
Well, yes, so the resolution I prepared on on research and direct discussion with a senior county rep, I, I learned and was somewhat surprised, but nonetheless, it's reality that this will have to be referred to the county prior to any action. My, my interpretation, which I'll defer to the town attorney for, if he, if I got it right, I believe the planning board has site plan authorization because it's a, it's a previously approved site plan that does not exceed the, the proposed berm and outlet structure doesn't exceed one acre. And there's no structure more than 2,500 square feet being built. So you have authority of review it and approve it. It's an unlisted action under SEAKER, but confirmed by the county, they're expecting it to be referred to them. So that's the procedural question. Then we, then we have, based on some conversations that went on prior to this meeting, there are some discussions about the extent there might be a need for buffering or screening on the property that, and the relationship of that to the perimeter undisturbed area that was discovered to be a part of the site plan approval from 2016 and 2017. So I think Frank's prepared to talk a little about that. So then one loose end that we have, the board's got correspondence that the applicant met with the neighbors. And apparently there was a set of agreements, including some cutting of additional trees. And I think the board needs to talk about how that relates to the site plan or whether that's just, you know, two, three property owners agreeing to do something. Should it be on the site plan or not? And is it consistent with that? To be clear, the primary action with this for stormwater mitigation is the construction of a berm to create an infiltration basin with an out, with an engineered outlet structure that would be essentially in the, close to the southwest corner of the property. Nothing else is going to be done on the property. That was researched by the applicant's engineer and it's been signed off and accepted by the town engineer. So the actual action proposed, other than this question about whether there needs to be any vegetative screening and the question of what should be mowed or not mowed, seems to have been resolved by the professional engineers involved from both parties.
So we talked about a lot of things, David, here. I'm not sure if I fully understand whether we have a complete site plan with complete agreements because it sounds like we may need to have some additional trees planted for screening, as well as some additional trees cut down. And are we sure that the stormwater prevention berm is going to suffice to keep, you know, the water out of the neighboring properties and channel it into a, an existing or designated area?
I can speak to the berm.
Yes.
So the berm, the berm was designed by Bruce. I believe Bruce is on the phone, on the meeting tonight. And it was reviewed by Dennis at Berner and Larios. And Dennis signed off on the construction of the stormwater portion of it. So for the stormwater portion, both engineers are in agreement. Where we're at is, I believe, that the trees they want to cut down are not even on this property.
Why are we talking about it?
It was an agreement made because they were trying to appease the park, the manufactured park behind it. So they were going to take down some trees on their property, not on this property. Bruce might be able to speak to that.
So what do we care about that, that agreement, Warren?
If, if the trees are not on this property, it doesn't affect the site plan.
Perfect.
What, what we're at is screening because if you saw, I, I guess this, the previous site plan got sent out today for everyone to review. You can see that they were not supposed to cut to the property line. There was a 20-foot buffer in most locations.
Correct.
So we no longer have that.
Okay, so do we need to, if, if that was in the original site plan, do they need, they, then if that was in the original site plan and they cut the trees and there's an issue with the neighboring, then they need to put the trees back or some sort of screening back? Has that been determined exactly what they need to do?
That fell to Frank over the weekend. I dropped off plans to him last night, so he was going to look into it today. I do not speak to pretend to know anything about trees. He is the expert.
What I was looking at, and now again, I don't know how long we're in length or where the starting point would be for the tree buffer. Because you look at the the, the line of where the trees were supposed to be taken out, there was a quite a long distance of 20 to 25 foot barrier. If we, if we follow that line, a the trees I'm looking at would be the red sea, American red cedar, eastern red cedar, which is a native tree, very popular, very easy to use, and it lives everywhere. Would be a double row staggered to give less visual penetration through the, through the screening. And closed enough to the people where the trees would not interfere with their own property, but back aways from the property line. Again, that would all have to be set up with the, with the layout of the site plan. And then looking into it a little bit further, probably popping in a couple of native shrubs just to break the monotony of a whole string of eastern red cedar.
Okay, so, so is it, Bruce, are you the one who's doing the site plan revision here?
Doing this site plan revision, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Part of the original, original projects. I'm not sure what, what buffer he's referring to right now.
Okay.
West side of the property, adjacent to the manufactured park.
The one, and that's the part where everybody met with the owners out there at the park and they came to the agreement of what they wanted done out there? Is that the same area or?
I believe so. See, their answer was, we're going to plant wildflowers. Well, that's, that's actually on, that's actually on the new site plan that, that Romeo is going to supply seeds so they can plant wildflower. The problem is, is that there were only two individuals at that, at that site meeting. There's the park owner and one of the adjacent neighbors. So that does not take into account all the other people that line that entire buffer zone.
And, and that's the area that the supervisor wanted screened.
Yes.
So, you know, what I'd like to see is, I'd like to, I'd like to actually see a completed site plan with all these modifications and have it brought back before it. I want to make sure that the mobile home park is comfortable with it. I know that on 9W, I can see through that property to the mobile home park, so I can see where there may be issues. I don't know if there are or not, but I, I think we need to have an updated site plan and we'll review it if you can get that completed by next month.
And if I can interject for one moment, my name is Lucia Romeo. I represent the property owner. I, I was out on the site. I met with the Mr. Brink. I met with Mr. Baxter, who was the vocal member of the manufactured home residents. I also had personal contact with another one of the residents. I tried repeatedly to get back into contact with her to have her come back out and meet with us. I, I received no reply from her. I spoke with Mr. Brink in advance of our meeting. I asked him to invite any of the members of the mobile home park that wanted to discuss this, that had concerns to come out and meet with us, and only Mr. Baxter showed up. The, I, I understand that there was a little derision about the wildflowers and, and I appreciate that when it's not necessarily up to par with a typical landscape plan. However, that was Mr. Baxter's request. That was not something that we offered, something that he requested and we agreed to. He also requested that we remove the additional trees as well. And some of the trees that were moved between his home and our property were at his request as well. So I, I understand this and we're willing to do what we need to do to make this right. But at the same time, it's, it's a little hard when we're getting conflicting responses from where we're at right now versus where we were with the property owners. And it was my understanding that we needed to come up with an agreement with the property owners to appease them, the property owner, because I guess technically Mr. Brink is the only property owner. But also the residents there, so that we could all come to an agreement. And we spent the time out there to do that, to try to make everyone happy. So when you're asking for us to revise the plan, I, I guess what I would ask for is a little bit more direction on that because we did what we thought was the right thing based on the information that we had received. So now, changing that at this point, if you could give us some more direction, we'd greatly appreciate that.
Yeah, I appreciate that and thank you for working this. I know there's a lot of parties involved and, you know, there's a lot of pre, you know, it's been going on for a number of years. So appreciate that. I think we just lost Warren, but I think Warren would be the Oh, there he is. Warren, you would be the point person to coordinate getting all this resolved, right?
I suppose.
The answer is yes.
The answer is yes. Okay, the answer is yes.
Chairman, I got a couple specific suggestions.
Yeah.
In no particular order. The site plan submitted has a, has a note, approximate location of proposed removal of six trees. If those aren't actually on your property, that we don't need the note. If they are, we're going to have to get a, I guess we're going to need a little more specificity, but I, on that question. So you just need to resolve that. I'm not sure that, I'll defer to the board, the box note about the discussion with the neighbors. If none of it particularly affects the stormwater mitigation, I don't know that we need that note.
Can I just say something real quick? I recall there being a discussion that they were going to have a buffer, regardless of who they spoke to, of all the properties that were along their back end and into, I guess it would be the west end into the north end. I recall that way back when we first started hearing from them. And I remember when it was all cleared out, that it was a very big issue and it was brought to our attention by people that live there.
Yeah, and I think that's what Frank was alluding to about the solution of planting the, the trees, two rows of trees.
Yes.
Yep, so I, I think what we need to do is get Warren to coordinate what the specifics are related to the screening. I think that's the largest issue. It, it sounds like the stormwater issue is, is resolved. The agreement to cut down some trees on some other people's property, I, I don't think we care about from this site plan. That's an agreement or something.
That's, yeah, that's separate that they agreed with that owner, but yeah, I'm talking about on the property itself, there was supposed to be a buffer all the way around.
Yep.
Yeah, all right. I just want to make sure I was understanding. I was trying to look back at my notes and I can't find it because it's been a couple of years.
Yep, I, I really think we're talking about the west and the north side, not the south and the east side, right?
Yeah, but I know the north side was an issue.
Yeah, the, I think it's only the north and east side.
The west. The north side was
North and west, I'm sorry.
North and west, yeah.
So the north and west side, you're talking about the north side as a butts to Angeles or?
Correct. That would be north because, you know.
Right.
Behind Angeles, correct.
The resident behind Angeles, okay, so not that.
Yeah, no, yeah, because otherwise
If I remember, if I remember correctly, what we talked about as doing a buffer zone was some shrubbery. We then, didn't necessarily talk about redoing trees there. And the biggest concern of the neighbor, particularly that one neighbor who lives in the house that kind of abuts into our property, her concern was the noise from the garbage removal, which obviously isn't on, because there is no garbage removal on the property now because there's no garbage, so.
Right, and, and what I'm, right, obviously, and that's sad in itself. But at the same time, I think there was a lot more removed than initially thought by the neighbors. That's what I think is happening. And yes, I know you did what you did with the, with the landlord of the trailer park, that's fine. But I think that even the other neighbors in the north, behind Angeles, I feel like they even think that there's a little bit too much been removed. Of the natural, of the natural part that was already growing.
So we need to take a look at what the original proposal was versus what was removed?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, if, yeah, that's what I was thinking. And I was trying to find it and I couldn't. So, I mean, it would probably take me a couple of days because it's been several years or a couple of years.
It, and Lucia, you know, we just want to make, make this right. We're not looking to overburden you financially and so on. We just want to make this right with, with the neighbors, okay?
Sure, and we, we appreciate that and we understand that. I, I just, you know, being that there's no, the, the biggest concern from all the public hearings that we had was the noise that was going to be generated from the operation, our dealership. And obviously, that's not an issue at this point. So I just want to make sure that, you know, you said you don't want to overburden us. I mean, I don't want to plant a forest because, you know, we're spending millions of dollars right down the road to build the other dealership. I want to do it right and we want to do right by the neighbors and we don't want this to be an ongoing problem. And I understand everybody is aggravated with that and absolutely would want to fix this. But, you know, I, I also don't want to spend $200,000 on trees.
Yeah.
Right, right, I agree.
Warren, Warren will be your point of contact. If you can give him a call and schedule with your representatives with Warren, Warren will make sure that, you know, the neighbors, as required, are, are engaged and we'll get a plan, a site plan together. We'll, we'll look at this in July. If we get it, if, if you guys get it all sorted out, we'll look at this in July, okay? All right, perfect. Any other questions? Do you, Lucia, have any question or Bruce?
It's Lucia.
Lucia, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I have one question. Looking at the proposed stormwater plan and the riprap outlet, that is a low area. Is there any possibility of water flowing through that?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's where the existing drainage goes now. And we're, we're using the same spot where the drainage has gone before. We're using the same spot now. It's the same plan that was put together in the previous proposal that was approved also.
Okay, have no problem with it then, because I was just looking at the proximity to the, the trailers that are behind that.
Yeah, they, they are, unfortunately, they were built in a drainage area.
Yeah.
So, so we're making sure, we're making sure we meet the post-development, meet the pre-development flows through that area.
Okay, no problem there. So the big question we have would be, where would the this row of buffer trees begin in relation to the the buildings on the trailer park?
Yep.
Yeah, that's, that's the only thing I don't know. I don't know, or I have a concept or a grasp of right now is where this buffer is.
And that's where, that's where the town and Warren specifically can help.
Right.
Okay. And just since this is new to me, out of curiosity, why did you guys abandon the plan for the Kia dealership there, just out of my curiosity?
Does it cost approximately twice what we had budgeted for?
Got it, okay. Got it. Okay.
And when you're talking several million dollars, that made it not feasible.
Yep.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That's why we had to explore the other option. If you look at the way that the property is laid out, the only possible location for the building was at the lowest point on the site. So the site work in and of itself was nearly two thirds of what we originally thought our budget, our entire budget would be.
Just to raise it.
Just to raise it up to be the proper height. So it was just astronomical with the cost. Unfortunately, in the interim, we were able to buy the property next to quick check, which is where the, the, the current approval is, which is where we planned it out.
Okay. Thanks for educating me. I appreciate that. All right. If, if there's nothing else.
Uh, one, one more question. You own the property now. Do you have any desire on what you would like the back of that to look like? If we're putting in, spreading trees of some sort?
We, we had had the conversation with Mr. Brink and Mr. Baxter as to that. And that's where we have that kind of dividing line where we agreed to stop mowing because they asked us to let it go wild. Um, I, I mean, in the future, if an opportunity presents to possibly do something with the property, obviously we would like it to be feasible, working with whatever we do now. Um, but as of right now, we have no plans with the property except for to make it, you know, so that everybody is, is happy with the condition.
Putting in a bunch of trees and having them cut down in another five years.
Yeah, I really would. I wouldn't let, not like to do that. So that would be great for everybody. Waste of money.
Do you think that, do you think that you would, um, utilize that for overflow parking, um, at some point?
Well, we have done that, obviously with the, you know, the chip shortage and the inventory shortage that we've been experiencing the last several months. We don't have any overflow inventory. Um, there's one Kia there right now. Um, but we, you know, in, in the future, yeah, we would, we would anticipate going back to what we've done in the past, which is just keeping overflow. That's why that, that front part we had gotten, uh, we put gravel in so that it's a little bit more level for vehicles. Um, but other than that, that's really the only plans that we have as of this point.
Okay.
Okay. Gabby, did you have something to say?
I did. I, I have a gentleman who lives in the manufactured home park that's come in numerous times. Um, and his ma- his main complaint was that it was not maintained and it would be overgrown. And, and that the pollen was so bad, he couldn't, he couldn't even go outside on his porch. So I figured I'd just mention when a portion of the neighbors wanted to grow wild, there is a gentleman who has come in numerous times and does not want it to grow wild. So I just wanted to make you aware.
I, I unfortunately, I don't think we're ever going to make everybody happy.
Yeah. No, it's never gonna happen.
You guys have more experience with that than I do, I'm sure.
Can only do what you can do.
Exactly.
Yeah. I just wanted to let you know.
Right. Are we going to take the action of this tonight as far as a referral to the county or, uh, the SWIP?
I don't think we're there.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll, we'll review it in, uh, in July. Okay. All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Lucia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
All right.
Okay. The next item is Hoffman Car Wash. Um, I believe they're taking a cue from, um, Uncle B's and going to put in automatic, um, automatic pay tellers. Um, it will include a modified pavement area. David, I believe you have a preliminary, uh, resolution.
Correct. Uh, so this is going to be, I think a set of three automated teller, tellers with, uh, lane designations. Uh, there'll be some, uh, uh, redoing of the pavement surface and striping, obviously. Um, it's going to have an ultimate reduction in impervious surface. Uh, it all happening to the rear of the property where the tellers are going to be. Um, I prepared a resolution. It's, uh, the action's very simple uh, in terms of, uh, impact. So it's, uh, it's, it's a type two action. Um, planning board's got full authority to review and there's no requirement to refer it to the county planning board.
Okay. Are there discussions for the applicant?
Are you, sorry, Mr. Chairman, are you asking if the applicant would like to say anything?
Yes, um, I, I am, as well as the board to have any questions for you.
And, and if, uh, I can leave it, uh, at that, uh, I wasn't sure whether you wanted to go with the board first or with the, with us, um, whichever is your pleasure.
Uh, why, why don't you go first?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, my name is, uh, Frank Palumbo. I'm with CT Mail Associates in, uh, Latham. Also, uh, on with us is Marty Andrews with Hoffman Development Corporation. Um, I think Mr. Church summarized, uh, things very well. This is, uh, for the inclusion of the automated tellers. Um, all in the back of the building, uh, all for improved operations and flow, um, a decrease in the pavement. Um, and thank you for, for bringing that up. Uh, and, um, so we really do see it as a fairly, um, simple and straightforward. Hoffman's has been uh, doing this, uh, at, uh, almost all of their facilities now. Uh, I think there's really only a few that they have not added these. It's been, um, uh, quite an attractive, um, thing for customers and it has, uh, improved the efficiency and the flow, um, through the site. So we really are, um, uh, interested, uh, but we, we both wanted to be here to answer any of the technical questions. Um, uh, and, uh, but also with Marty here, um, uh, he knows the ins and outs of their operations. If you did have any questions, uh, he could answer those as well. But I, I think you probably are aware of the site. Um, so what we'll do is, and we would love to hear your questions if there are any.
I, I have a couple. So today there's a single lane and, and it's a double lane when uh, it gets busy. And so now you're expanding to three lanes from, from the two that you utilized today.
Yes.
That is correct. Okay. And the employee parking in the back, are you going to move that in any direction? Is there a reduction in the parking spaces or a movement in the parking spaces?
So what you, what you can see on the screen, um, the gray area is new pavement. And so the parking spaces are, uh, moved back, uh, a little. Um, but they, the parking was on the curve. These will be more, um, uh, straight in parking. And, uh, with that, uh, addition of the pavement, that's why we selected areas of the site where we could uh, remove pavement that was not necessary anymore and bring that back to green, um, so that we were balancing things out.
So the parking, parking calculations look like they're identical and it is a 63 square foot reduction in impervious surface.
And, and these automatic machines will read the barcode on the, on a car as it goes through?
That is correct. So, um, since we've gone to the subscription base model in all of our car washes several years ago. Um, and with the onset of COVID, you know, the, no interaction has been really popular with people. And so this, the subscription model is just like an easy pass. It reads it. We'll have a, we'll have a lane. It's not dedicated per se, but we'll have like a, a membership only lane. But anybody can go through it. But as you go through it automatically lifts up the gate. So it does speed up the process because you don't have that interaction, um, with somebody trying to um, fumble through a tablet to, uh, to queue up the wash.
Thank you.
Okay. My only question I have is since you have three lanes and you really only can, you're getting to one. Are you going to have somebody helping so that that third lane doesn't always have to take, you know, passage because the other two lanes are merging?
Yes, we'll man those, um, tellers. There'll be somebody out there almost all the time.
Okay.
To, to help people, especially on real busy days that we know it's going to be busy. We know that. Uh, we know those Fridays and Saturdays that are going to be busy. We want to man them.
The first sunny day after a week. Yeah.
Yeah. So we, we want to make sure everybody gets through, uh, flawlessly and there's no, uh, aggravation to our advantage. So we do that everywhere. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That was my only question.
So with this third lane, are, are you confident that you won't need this, um, this existing pavement to help corral into, from three lanes into two one?
Good question.
Yes. So by eliminating that, because if you let the cars, so you want them to funnel as soon as they get past the gate. So you want them to funnel. So so you know, we have, we have gate detections in after the gate. So the gate won't come down on a car. But you also want, if we leave that blacktop there, the cars are going to get too wide and they're, then they're going to be too wide and it's trying to compete to get in. People, we have this at a bunch of our locations and one that's real familiar with this is Vestal, our Vestal location. And that is our busiest location in, for Hoffman Car Wash. And it works great. The people, they do, they get patient and they let everybody get their turn. Nobody tries to rush in. So it works pretty good. And, and we have somebody manning out there. So it works, it works good for us. This would be, I think this is going to be our 14th location now that we have these. So we didn't take it from Mr. B's.
Thank you. A- any other questions from the board? Uh, David, can you read the resolution then?
Yes. Whereas applicant, uh, Hoffman Realty Ulster LLC seeks approval to amend the site plan for installation of automated tellers to an existing car wash in 1091 Ulster Avenue. Whereas the material submitted in support of the proposed action included complete application for site plan amendment with, uh, reference to date, site, site layout plan, automated pay station, uh, Hoffman Realty Ulster, prepared by CT Mail dated, uh, April 22nd of this year. Assigned owner consent form, assigned escrow agreement and a complete environmental assessment form prepared also by CT Mail. Uh, whereas the town of Ulster Planning Board retains the authority to approve the site plan amendment in accordance with the town code. And whereas the proposed action is exempt from referral to the Ulster County Planning Board pursuant to the referral agreement with the town of Ulster. And whereas the town of Ulster Planning Board upon reviewing the record determines the proposed action is a type two action and no further decision is required under seeker. Now therefore be resolved, the town of Ulster Planning Board grants conditional site plan approval for the proposed action subject to the conditions, limitations and restrictions set forth below. One, compliance with applicable zoning and building laws, rules and regulations. Two, compliance of all representations made by the applicant. Three, compliance with site plan, design plans and all details as cited herein. Four, compliance with the comments of the Ulster County Highway and Water Superintendent's, uh, if necessary. Five, the town's consulting planner and building inspector are hereby authorized to approve minor site plan changes of ministerial nature which may arise due to unforeseen circumstances in the development. And six, all fees including consultant fees shall be paid.
Okay. Um, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the resolution.
Talking about motion, Larry.
Gabby, can you call the roll?
Ms. Hayner? Oh, she just logged in. Mr. Armquist?
Yes.
Mr. Decker?
Yes.
Mrs. Stabopoulos?
Yes.
Chairman Ring?
Yes.
Ms. Hayner?
Sorry, guys. I got kicked. I'm here. Yes.
All right. Well, good luck with your project.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll do our best to make it something you're, you're happy you approved.
And, and Frank, I just have one more or just question, if you don't mind. Um, the employee parking, the employees to get out of the parking lot have to go beside the, um, the automated teller, wait for a break in the line and then exit through, um, the diner parking lot, right?
Marty, you, are you still there, Marty?
Yep, I'm still on. That's what's going to have to happen. Or on our, on very limited days, they can come back and go through the, our, um, detail shop area. Cause you know, it's, uh, that kind of our business is really slowing down. So.
Yep. Okay. Great. Thanks for that. And, uh, and, and good luck with the project.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't forget to get a permit.
We won't. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. And then there's just one more piece of business that's not on the agenda. Frank, um, you made a recommendation relating to coverage in the county planning, um, board meetings on, um, to assign an alternate in case you're not available.
Um, I, I believe I'm that, I'm actually, I think I'm the alternate because I had to sign paperwork.
It was officially done and is the alternate.
Okay. Perfect. Then we have no discussion.
Yeah, I didn't know that when I was, when I made the note to you.
I didn't know it until the paperwork came in. And I was like, oh, okay. I guess I'm the alternate.
Larry, what's this? I hear you tried to go to the meeting last night.
Hold on, I'm joking. You were spying on me?
No, I got spies everywhere. I wasn't spying on you.
If I was appearing to be very, uh, dapper that last night.
Oh, okay. Sorry. We missed it.
Good job, Warren.
I'm everywhere.
All right. Is, is there anything that the board has that they'd like to discuss?
That I know of.
No. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn, having conducted the town's business.
Nice. I agree.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We'll see you next month. Thanks.
Good night, guys.
I wonder if you have any problems or want some help with that.